Thanks, Jordan. Sorry. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today at the May 29th, 2025 Regular County Council Meeting. We're starting a little bit late today as MPC went a little bit over. However, we will open the meeting at 9:40 a.m. I would like to read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty VI and Treaty VIII Traditional Territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. So before we start the approval of the agenda, are there any additions and deletions? None. All right, we will go through the items to determine which ones the council would like to discuss. The ones that I know of at this time are 2.1, 4.1, 5.2, 6.1, 6.2, 7.1, 7.3, 7.6, 7.10, 7.10. 8.1C, 8.2, 10.1F, which will happen enclosed, and all enclosed items, 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, 12.4, and 12.5. Does, go ahead, please, Counselor Cromwell.
Oh, sorry, no addition, though. Jump in the gun to approve as amended.
Okay, we'll note that. Does anybody else have anything further that they would like to discuss?
7.9?
7.9? Okay. Anyone else?
I guess maybe I should have added on it. It's just a report, verbal report on our Summer Village meeting.
Okay, is that?
On the west side. And what?
Convention versions, um.
Summer Village.
Sure, we'll leave it as, yeah, I agree, 10 points AI will mention that as the Summer Village meeting.
Oh, there we are. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Alrighty, and if nobody else, 7.5 I would like to add. And I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, everything, I'll run through those again. Oh, go ahead.
7.7.
7.7.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
We're 6.1 and 6.2 on there.
6.1, 6.2, correct? Yes?
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, I'll run through those again. So 2.1, 4.1, 5.2, 6.1, 6.2, 7.1, 7.3, 7.5, 7.6, 7.7, 7.9, 7.10, 8.1C, 8.2, 10.1F enclosed, 10.1AI, and all of closed session items, 12.1 through 12.5. And I believe we have a motion from Counselor Cromwell to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? And no opposed, that is 7 and 2. Alrighty, so.
7 and 0. 7 and 0.
7. I'm sorry, I'm thinking I should have mentioned earlier, and I appreciate that, 7 and 0, that we have two counselors that are absent in a FCM conference in Ottawa, which is Counselor Capitan and Counselor Wallack, and that's when I had the two in my mind. Yeah, right, could have been. Alrighty, and I assume we have nobody on Zoom, so I just double-check that. All right, so if we can move forward, we will go on to, which is our delegation, which won't happen until 11 a.m. And so we will move to item 5.2 on your agenda, which is page 33 of the package, and that is the Boyle Fish Pond. So go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I'll move the recommended motion.
Okay, Counselor Anderson would like to move the recommended motion. I know in part of a conversation we've had before, just curious if this item will also be discussed at the Inter-Municipal Committee with Boyle and the county. Do we know if it's on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll answer. It hasn't been placed on the agenda. Until council passes a motion, we're not even working on the project.
Okay.
So if you pass the motion, probably have some discussion with the village.
Okay, thank you. Already, is there any further discussion? Okay, on the motion, Counselor Anderson would like to direct administration to proceed with the proposed proposal received for Boyle Fish Pond engagement. All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and opposed? 1, 2, 3, actually, so it's 4 and 3. Motion carries. All right, the next item we have is item 6.1, page 35 of your agenda. That is bylaw 012-2025, the procedural bylaw amendment. The recommendation here is that council give first reading to bylaw 012-2025. Is there any discussion from administration or council? Counselor Hall?
Sorry, are we moving the motion first, or are we discussing first, just so I'm clear on the process?
That's what I was just asking, if there's any discussion on the first reading.
Has someone moved first reading?
No, I was asking if there was any discussion.
So at the committee, the whole, there was a discussion around whether it's legal to limit the number of times anyone, like to restrict counselors attending via electronic or remote means, and I just wasn't, was wondering if admin had any new information to add to that question?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, was there a specific request that you asked us to research?
In, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, there was a question about, is it even legal to limit the number of times a council can approve, or can attend electronically? And it wasn't a specific motion. It was my impression from the meeting, it was something that would just be a takeaway to.
Okay, we can certainly review that if council so wishes between first and second or third reading. Wasn't, wasn't sure, I guess as a, as a person who's new here, since you had the procedural bylaw, I assume council of the day researched that before you adopted it with, I think you had a limit on attendance. So I assumed you had legal advice at that time, but we certainly could. If we're saying now that we passed a procedural bylaw without getting legal advice, we could probably do that in the future.
And if I may, we are still waiting for the template to come forward from the province, which may change a lot of this to begin with. So for me, I wouldn't be interested in going into a legal check on this and spending that money until we receive that template and see where we can go from there. Is there any other further discussion?
I, I'll go ahead with it. A member may attend a regular county council remotely no more than six times a year unless, unless council approves additional and unless exonerating circumstances require additional remote attendance. So even though it's held at six, the person could, the counselor could come into council and say, for some reason, I, something happened or something like that, can I, can I do more of these? And then it's up to council if, if the person wants to have more meetings.
Or what? Or what, what?
Like if we end up with someone hits their six and wants to attend the seventh time, what's the, or what? We will say no?
It becomes a decision of council.
Yeah, it becomes a decision of council. It's just, they need to actually come to a meeting and say.
And that becomes a question, is it legal for the balance, the rest of council to restrict someone from attending when they're able to? In a legal way?
I think under the procedural bylaw, that's the legal way, is, is to, it's, it's adopt, this bylaw was adopted by council and it's not saying that you can't come and ask, and council will make that decision, that's all it's saying. And I agree also, this is probably going to be ripped up and changed and then torn apart and everything by our provincial government, so. Yeah, I, I think we should just, I'll move first reading.
Okay, Counselor Minz would like to move to first meeting, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. I remember when we were talking about electronic attending. And I remember some of the comments about, well, if you hit your six, well, maybe you just don't attend. I think that that was poor workmanship at the time, and I think that there are, I would like to have a legal opinion on if you can go, hey, no, you cannot attend. Remembering that we've gone through pandemics where all meetings were done electronically for quite a while, realizing that things happen between one part of the county and the next. I, though I don't believe anyone is near that limit, I don't think it is appropriate or fair to go, hey, you've hit your six, now you have to come in and talk to us, so you're going to perhaps miss meeting number seven and not come here and represent, I think is short-sighted. But I will support first reading with the understanding that our administration would get us a legal answer before we move on to a second reading, so that we are being fair to our colleagues in the room, to our colleagues that are not in the room, and to future people that will be sitting at this table.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Do I need to make a formal request of administration to get a legal opinion on that? I believe I will make that as a formal motion afterward on first reading.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion? All right, Counselor Minz would like to move that council give first reading to bylaw 012-2025. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and opposed? 2, thank you. And Counselor Cromwell would like to make a motion to direct administration to obtain a legal opinion regarding the amount of, how would you like to word that, amount of times council would like to, or council will be?
Regarding the legality of council limiting the number of times a counselor can appear electronically to a meeting.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the word electronically was replaced remotely by remotely? If you would like to use that word?
Happily, you can wordsmith that one.
Thank you. And I will just check with Ms. Plord if she was able to capture all of that. Fantastic, already. Is there any discussion on, go ahead, Counselor Anderson?
Thanks, I'm in support of this motion. I think when we originally put this clause into our procedural bylaw, we were dealing with a very different level of technology in our room as well. I don't think we had our new microphones yet. Our ability to livestream and Zoom has improved incredibly since then. And, I mean, we now have a communications coordinator in the room with us. So I do think that our situation today is not the same situation we were in then. And because of that, I, this is something that I think we should revisit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
I, I think there's no harm in finding out the boundaries. And certainly, the value of your contribution is not measured by your presence in this area. To me, that would be a mistake, and that's what this, I think it's just good. I think the, like, it's good that the, for us to check and find out, and then we can make a decision on what we want to do, but know where the guidelines are, know what the options are, and, and finding out whether it's even legal gives us a choice, a chance to choose. If, if it's legal, then we can make a choice yes or no. If it's not, then we, we know where the boundaries are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Minz?
Everybody has different values. My value is to have everybody sitting around this table. That's, that's what my value is. We can, we can say what our value is. I don't think it's a mistake. I don't hear anybody saying mistake, but it's a, it's a value in my thoughts and opinions that we have everybody around this table instead of people all over God's green earth that can actually zoom in every meeting. I, I don't call that a value, so that's my point.
Thank you. Anyone else? As I mentioned before, I'm going to vote against that particular motion, just for the reason being that we are still awaiting the province to bring forward the template for a procedural bylaw. And, and for me, in spending dollars that may not necessarily be required is, I think, I don't think we're in a hurry to do it. So I'm, I'm just going to mention that I would, I would prefer for myself to wait for the template to come forward from the government. Go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
I'll take last word, Counselor Chalmers, Inc. Can you move your microphone closer to your mic?
Do we have any idea when that template is going to appear? Any? We don't, timeline. And I, and as I mentioned earlier as well, that I don't think anybody's close to meeting the six, the number six anyway, but go for it. Your last word, Larry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I recall from, from discussions by administration, we have the ability to ask a quick question without gaining much legal fee. I'm hoping that a very quick question, hey, can we legally bind or legally stop or legally put a number on it, would be a very short and quick bit of communication. Even if not, in order to be fair to the people in and out of this room, to our ratepayers, to our public, our administration, to find out if we are operating legally or illegally, for lack of a better word, I think is very important. The ability to have that and be able to stand by a decision should we come to it, I think is worth that little bit of cost. It may be occurred. Again, I am confident that it can be a very quick question and a very quick answer going, yep, nope. And happy, happy. So I would support my own motion. I would ask you to support my motion and be fair to this team and the teams yet to come, realizing bills will change. But we're also dealing with a government full of red tape. We can hope it'll come tomorrow. It could come four years, three days, and two months from tomorrow before they get it done. So we cannot put life on hold because we're waiting for information to come from a upper level of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Already, would you like to read your motion one more time? Or we all have it? We all have it, would you, do we need it read? Nope, we're good to go, if everybody's ready for that vote on Counselor Cromwell's motion. All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, and opposed? 1, 2, 3, thank you. All right, item 6.2 under your bylaws, page 42 to 57 of our council administrative, geez, a package. And this again is the bylaw 010-2025, the animal control bylaw. The recommendation, of course, is to give, council give first reading to bylaw 010-2025. Would anyone like to, Counselor Cromwell would like to provide that more, that first reading direction, just making a note here. Discussion, please. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I'm just wondering, once first reading passes, are we planning on doing any public consultation for the animal control bylaw? Or hosting a public hearing for it? I know usually when we are going to host a public hearing, we schedule the date at the time of first reading. So that was just something I'd like to see for this, is at least a public hearing, if not some sort of other consultation.
Okay. Is that a formal motion you would like to make there for a public hearing?
It's a non-statutory public hearing.
It would be a non-statutory public hearing, so if there is will at the table to host something like that, or to go one way or the other with it, I would make that amendment, yes. And then if we could have discussion on dates or ask administration what a potential date would be, though, before making the formal amendment, amended motion, that'd be great.
Is administration able to weigh in on a date that would work for this?
Madam Chair, as soon as we could publicize it, so, I mean, generally, it'd be about a month from now, generally, right?
So the last meeting in June, June 26?
Yeah, how about that?
Okay. So so far in having this conversation, there is an amendment to give first reading to bylaw 010-2025, adding to host a public hearing on June 26, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. We, we talk frequently about public engagement. We talk frequently about interactions and though it's not a requirement for a public hearing, I completely support it and would love to get some input from our ratepayer.
Thank you. The one thing that I was noted, I noted in the discussion was the following, the Committee of the Whole meeting, the minor revisions were made to the draft bylaw. When I was going through the bylaw, I didn't, and I'm sorry, I didn't take the time to actually go in depth, but was just wondering if you can identify what the minor revisions are.
Madam Chair, absolutely. So in the council meeting, we found two areas. There was a spelling error that we had in the, in the word serious, missing an i. As well, we had feedback from Counselor Hall regarding the duplication of abandoned animals in section 14, as well as it being addressed in the definitions. We still require section 14, but we have amended so that the definition is as per the definition section. And we've just left, left the enforceability piece to 14.
Okay, thank you. And I know we discussed mushers as well.
Yes, Madam Chair, and upon further discussion after the meeting, we've opted to not exclude mushers. We've kept it to licensed businesses, so like kennels that require permitting and, and development permits. Are more of a business where unfortunately mushers is a very loose group. It's not a licensed group per se, so just to avoid having gray, gray areas where I have 18 Yorkies as my mushing team. We've, we've opted to keep it for now. And really, like, the overlimit permit process is not meant to be onerous or incumbent on, on operations. It's just meant to be more of an education piece for us, so.
Okay, thank you. So if a musher decides that they would like to start up a, a dog lot, I guess you could say, how would that fit?
Madam Chair, simply they just apply, apply for an overlimit permit, and an enforcement officer would go out and, again, make sure they're educated to the by our bylaw and the requirements regarding okay, noise and nuisance, and they get their permit, and as long as there's no complaints, it'd be, that'd be it, that'd be the end of it.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that. Fantastic. All right, is there any other further discussion? So on the amendment that was mentioned earlier, I guess we'll, we'll start with amendment. And that is to host a public hearing for bylaw 010-2025 on June 26, 2025, if I have that correct? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And it doesn't appear there's any opposed, so that's 7 and 0. So Counselor Cromwell, under the recommendation that council give first reading to bylaw 010-2025 and further to host a public hearing on June 26, 2025, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And no opposed? Thank you very much. We will move to new business, which is the first item, 7.1 Grants to Organizations for the Magnificent River Rats Festival, page 58 of your package. Is there a motion? All right. Well, we'll have a little discussion before the motion, I guess, if that's suitable. The recommendation from.
I'll move the recommended motion.
Okay, Counselor Minz would like to recommend a motion? Alrighty, one thing that, if I may open the, the discussion. So the motion that Counselor Minz has mentioned is that the council approves $3,000 for the 2025 Magnificent River Rats Festival and directs administration to provide in-kind support for the event for setup and take down of perimeter fencing valued at $5,400 for related wages and rental. One thing I noticed in, in conversation and, or in the agenda package is that the $3,000 is also being asked for fireworks in our next item, 7.2. And so I went back and forth in my mind, wondering, this $3,000 plus another $3,000 plus the $5,400 seemed a little bit high, considering the, the amount of other sponsorship that's happening, what the town of Athabasca has decided. I think they're limited at $3,000. So I'm just wondering if there's further discussion, if people would like, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you very much. I was reading that as well. And I didn't want to start off and be the, the bad guy in the group, but why not? I would like to amend that motion. The council approves a in-kind support for the event setup and take down of perimeter fencing valued at $450, $5,400 for related wages and rentals for the 2025 Magnificent River Rack, River Rats Festival.
Okay. So basically, it's the same motion minus the 3,000. Okay, so to leave it in kind, all right.
Madam Chair, would you like an explanation from administration? I think we have something before you debate it too much.
Yeah, absolutely, for sure, thank you.
First of all, Madam Chair and members of council, good morning. First of all, I just want to mention that the 5,400 is actually 5,900. We missed a $500 rental cost for the fencing in there. Secondly, the River Rats had originally asked for $5,000, I believe, yes. And we, we felt that we could match what the town was contributing, so we, we decreased the cost to $3,000. This particular one is, could you just explain, Angela, what this one is for? It's not for the fireworks, but it's for something different than that?
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that the town redirected $3,000 to the magnificent River Rats as requested by the chamber. The same request did not come to us. This is because our portion will help pay for the fireworks via the chamber, and the town's portion will help with the setup, which will be managed by the River Rats. This is our understanding of how it's been clarified.
Go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. I understand wanting to match the contribution in cash by the town. Are they matching the in-kind support as well of that contribution? Question to administration.
Sorry, through the chair to Counselor Cromwell. I'm not aware if it's going towards their in-kind. I know there was funding that was reserved towards the festival. In terms of the chamber, I know that they have ordered the fireworks and they are involved essentially with the ordering, but not with the setup. So they've backed out with some of the responsibilities more on, so on the day of setting. more on so on the day of setting up the event and with um the fireworks, so. Um. This is more it while it doesn't specify within the application if the costs are what they're being used towards, I would say is to general expenses as the need arises.
Okay.
And within their budget, their expenses and their income, they do match. So there is a need for this five thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I if I may, Madam Chair, thank you. I I definitely do appreciate that and we are here to to support activities in our community and perhaps it's my my way of looking at it, I I see this as donating three thousand dollars twice over for fireworks. Put under a different line and ask them for an in kind uh donation now fifty nine hundred versus fifty four hundred. And that brings me with my rough math up to twelve thousand dollars for basically that day in that event. I I look around our count and I look at where else we where else can we put three thousand dollars? Where else can that additional go for other parts and other members of our county? We have conversation coming up about fundraising for playground, which I think is a very important uh bit of real estate for our young people. I I cannot get behind both an in kind donation of fifty nine hundred dollars, our staff time taking away from other projects that as well from whatever situation may occur. We're in a very explosive time of the year, and if we have so many staff that are donated here and then other things come up and we're giving money on top of that. I I think that just because we have some money left in our uh grants organization budget. Um, I don't want to take a third of it out for a one day event and I cannot get behind two donations of three thousand dollars with that in kind.
Hey, thank you. Um, cool, good, councillor Hall. Um, I just was curious about the fifteen, the fifty four hundred when we first discussed and then uh it's um corrected to fifty nine hundred. Do we need a friendly amendment there to or a friend, yeah, friendly amendment, I guess, to make that change in both the amendment and the motion that was discussed earlier? Is that fair? Friendly amendment, friendly amendment? Everybody's happy with that? Okay. There's one question that I did have. Um, and I I really appreciate in the report, the twenty twenty five budget for um grants organization and that it was fifty thousand. We increased that this year. I believe in twenty twenty four, it was hardly used. Is that accurate? Uh, does anybody remember what the twenty twenty four amount ended up being for the final, what we used for that budget? Because I I if I'm not mistaken, it was, we really didn't utilize it very much at all. Is that accurate?
Chair Holland, size.
Okay.
I can relay back what that number is, but I know that there was a sizable amount left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I seem to remember that as well. Councillor Hall?
Um, so a couple of things, but to start with a question through the chair to administration for clarity, how many requests has magnificent River Rats made to us?
Through the chair to councillor Hall, there's been one request made.
So we have one request that we're debating and it was for in kind and three thousand dollars. We're not debating two requests. They've not asked us for two two requests of three thousand dollars. You've asked us for three thousand dollars. Asked us, I think, for more and he said he reduced it. Um, so I I think we have to be careful. I mean, it's not legitimate to start weaving different organizations in. I mean, we we are not talking about we shouldn't do this because we're going to do the playground. This is an isolated request. Magnificent River Rats has asked us for some help with the fence, which the county has done for twenty plus years or more. Um, it pretty well every year they've had the festival, I think. And we are a large and robust organization that can certainly afford a three thousand dollar cash outlay to one of the, you know, large uh well attended events that that occurs in the region. It brings people together from all over the place and uh I I think we are spending like this is a reasonable spend, especially when we look at some of the other, you know, we we do other large uh large donations, cash donations to to other events and bring people together and um I think we should uh let this we should, we should pass this, uh, but for clarity, I I see nowhere where we've been asked for the money twice. It's the two organizations are having two events on the same day. You you know, or that are that are coordinating their events to make the day a bigger event. Is not really relevant to the decision. If we get a request from the seniors to sponsor pie and ice cream at the senior center, are we going to now say, oh goodness, we've already done fireworks and this, like, we're going to look at each one on its own merits and I would encourage council to look at the merits of this particular request and not layer it up with a bunch of other stuff.
Thank you, councillor Jamesick.
I can agree with um mostly with what Mr. Colf has said. Um, you know, when we look at this, yeah, you know, it's a quite costly, I guess, when you take in the account of our related wages and rentals and whatnot and the three thousand, but I do recall during budget discussions, it being very sizable of the amount unused. And I mean, at the end of the day, this is a huge attraction for not only our county residents, but outside and coming into our beautiful region and being able to have a look and you know what? See the opportunities here. It's a great way to also showcase.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Anderson and councillor Hall.
Thank you. It takes a lot of energy and effort and different community groups coming together to host something at the scale of the River Rats Festival. And while we may look at it as one day and one big event for the community, it's actually a a lot of different groups coming together to make that happen. And sometimes multiple groups are going to need help to do their part. And so I'm in favor of this donation and of the one that we approved with our agenda. Um, because it's two groups coming together to make something really amazing happen for the community. And so for that reason, I'm I'm in, I'm in favor.
Thank you, councillor Hall.
Uh, this is a correction. I might have said it was a one day event. I think it's actually a two day event. But also um at the risk of speaking twice, I would just add the the one thought that I think we should consider there's a benefit to our the employees uh of the county or the CIO's employees to being able to being able to be part of community events. And that's one of the things I think is important for organizations is when they're, when the staff can say, we're going to get together and have organizational support. And then they get to participate in a way that um they can be proud that my employer supports making our community a good place to be. And so whether it's here or at other events in other places, I would say that same philosophy holds for me.
Thank you, councillor Gerlock.
Yeah, I again, the the assistance to to set up and whatever has been there for twenty years, th- this is probably the first year there was ever a number put on it. And uh and so it makes it look somehow distorted, but I thought when they made the presentation and they asked for five thousand dollars, I thought that was well received at the time. And uh the fact that it's reduced to three is a s- a little step back. This is something that this is a community thing that involves the citizens of the town of Athabasca, the summer villages, the county. And everyone benefits equally across the board. Everybody has access to it because it is free. There are no restrictions to anybody. And these are the types of events that really should be promoted heavily by uh by local governments at at whatever level. Uh, like I wouldn't be opposed to the five thousand dollar contribution that they originally asked for if it was required to.
I was just gonna ask, is that an amendment you would like to make?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, councillor Gerlock. Um, and and I love these healthy discussions because that's where we sit and we're open minded and amenable to persuasion and um understanding what administration has said and what has been said around the table. Um, it I'm definitely in favor of amendment two as well. So amendment two, if we're, if there's no further discussion, councillor Minz. Do you want to what? Sorry?
Just up my last.
Oh, we after the
No, okay, then I'll do it after the
Does that work?
Yeah.
All right. So the second amendment is that council approve five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty five magnificent River Rats Festival and directs administration to provide in kind support for the event for setup and take down a perimeter fencing valued at fifty nine hundred dollars for related wages and rental. Okay, I think I have that correct, councillor Cromwell.
Thank you. And I'm going to be that guy right now on page sixty nine of your agenda. The second last line in their budget is a another word for reserve for next year's event valued at thirty four hundred and twenty seven dollars. Twenty twenty six advance. Unless you can explain to me that that is not, that I'm reading that as a reserve put in for the following year.
Can you tell us the page number you're
Page number sixty nine of your agenda.
Okay, sixty nine. Sorry, I heard fifty nine, so I was looking for it, sorry.
Second line from the bottom. Two thousand twenty six advance to meet advance, no different than a reserve valued at thirty four twenty seven three thousand four hundred twenty seven dollars added to their budget.
Okay, so
So I understand that as they are preparing for next year's event and the three thousand dollars as requested in our budget is going to their advance for next year's event. That is where, and forgive me that I didn't finish that conversation before, is where I was opposed to a three thousand dollar cash on top of our in kind when for my understanding of their budget is simply putting it away for the following year.
Okay, I appreciate your thoughts there. Thank you, councillor Minz and then councillor Hall.
One, one thing we must remember that that it's a budget. Budgets aren't uh they're wrote on stone, but red budgets can be changed. So I think they're just throwing that in there just to say, okay, we possibly could have a a uh little bit of money left, but chances are they're probably not. Uh, something will happen. They'll have to spend more money somewhere or something like that. And if they do, great, then that'll show up in next year and say, okay, well, now we actually only need two thousand dollars instead of the five or something like that. That's the only thing I'm looking at is is budgets, budgets can be moved, can be moved around. So that was pretty actually onerous of them to actually put that in. So my thoughts.
Thank you, councillor Hall and then councillor Jamesick.
Well, I just wanted to add that while I appreciate, you know, there's concerns, there's no context to that. You've not told us what they came into the year with. And for all these organizations to run, they need to have a base amount of block of funds that they use to start next year's operations. And so they take that at the beginning of this year. And so if they if they start off with a a block of cash that we don't see here because this is an income statement, not a balance sheet. Um, we don't, we can't make a decision based on on seeing a thirty four hundred dollar line because we don't know the rest. And so I I think we need to be really careful about passing judgment in that way because we don't have the full context. They they may have brought cash into the year and and they're just, the way they're showing that is really saying we're replenishing savings that we use to get rolling. Seed money, I think, would be the term.
Thank you, councillor Jamesick.
I agree with that. Um, many of the nonprofits and events that operate within our towns and areas um set themselves up in a way for those residual events to make sure that they have that building block to whether it be to pay for hotels for their casinos or those down payments for those bands for the next year for their event. I mean, to me, I think it's a a good start to pre planning for the next twenty twenty seven year and twenty eight and so on.
Thank you. Alrighty, is there any further discussion on amendment two? And just as a reminder, that is that council approves five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty five magnificent River Rats Festival and directs administration to provide in kind support for the event for setup and take down a perimeter fencing valued at fifty nine hundred dollars for related wages and rental. If there's no further discussion on that amendment? All those in favor? And opposed? Six and one. So I'm really not sure how this is going to flow into amendment one. Um, other than I'm just going to read amendment one. Um. That council approves the twenty twenty five, and I hope I have this correct, that council approves the twenty twenty five magnificent River Rats Festival and directs administration to provide in kind support for the event for setup and take down a perimeter fencing valued at fifty nine hundred dollars for related wages and rental. I don't think I need to mention the the dollar figure from amendment two. Okay, all right. So all those in favor? Do I have that incorrect?
Um. No, this is what, I mean, if you wanted to stay at five grand, though, you need to defeat amendment two.
Correct.
Oh, but really amendments can be just a strike word. So really, the the, I think the spirit of the amendment is to strike out the cash part of the donation and leave it rest alone. As long as we understand that's what's happening and in order to move ahead, I think you need to defeat this.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarity. So does everybody understand what's happening here? So amendment one was to strike out the the value and leave in in kind. Everybody's understanding? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Alrighty, so that amendment one fails. So on the original motion, councillor Minz would like that council approves five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty five magnificent River Rats Fest- River Rat Rats Festival and directs administration to provide in kind support for the event for setup and take down a perimeter fencing valued at fifty nine hundred dollars for related wages and rental. If there's no further discussion? Although, did you want final word? All right.
Oh, he does. My final word is is everybody around the table, other than councillor Cromwell, stole everything I wanted to say. Just regarding this is community, this is a a a free event that that uh exactly what councillor Gerlock said that enhances community uh not only for the for the town and and summer villages and 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 who knows, people come in also from other areas, maybe calling Lake and and uh envy of opportunity. Yeah, yeah, Monoc. Very good. Um. Uh, Donaville. Um, so it's it's it's, I think it's a great thing. I just wanted to thank everybody for all their positive comments on of this.
Thank you. That's that's awesome. Wonderful community spirit here in the room today. If we're ready for the vote? No further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Six of six and one. Thank you, folks. All right, we're moving on to seven point three, uh, which is page eighty six of your agenda package. And this is for the Community Assistance Grant uh Hasen School Council Fundraising Committee. And I believe councillor James, go ahead.
Um, with that, I would like it to be received. Um, I'm not sure. I noted one thing while grading this agenda that it was uh set out in April. In March, I note went and I read an article that uh that um Northern Lights Public Schools announced on March twentieth and then March twenty eighth that the pre planning has started for Buffalo Lake um Maiti Settlement uh operated school. So I read the article and I read, went into their capital plan and it said that the third party is being, sorry, being built on the settlement with no, it's the first, it's the only um Maiti settlement with no school, believe it or not, in all of Alberta. I thought that was kind of interesting. Um, a new school in Buffalo Lake would replace the current Casland School, which most of the students from Buffalo Lake attend was written into the report that I did read just to to put that out on the table.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to put the motion forward that council receive?
See.
Receive this report as information regarding the county's contribution of five thousand dollars to the council school council fundraising committee for the replacement of the school playground. Is there a discussion? Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. When was this request originally made? Because the admin report says that the school's current playground is deteriorating due to age, making it less accessible and more hazardous. The old playground will be dismantled this spring. But the old playground was dismantled, I believe, last spring. It has been gone for a while. Those kids have not had a playground all school year. So I'm just kind of wondering when the request was originally made? And I also just wanted to note that this is the only playground in the Hamlet. So whether it's the actual school attendees that are using it or people coming out to the provincial park. So whether it's the actual school attendees that are using it or people coming out to the provincial park or to the lake uh, residences in that area or farm kids like mine who just wanna go to town and meet up with a friend. Uh, that is the only playground in the area and it has been missed this year.
Through the chair to Counselor Anderson, this request was made in April of twenty twenty five.
Okay, Councilor Cromwell?
Thank you. And though I did not realize that there is no playground in that hamlet, and forgive me, I don't get much past the lake when I come down there, but I do, I do love to hit up the store, but I haven't actually looked at the playground situation. Um, we're talking about our children, our community's children. And yes, we have heard about the new, the new school and that may or may not impact me, the, the students at the Casland School and what is happening over there. However, um, I think that having a, I was gonna say safe, but now a place for and keep the word safe in there, place for children to play and be children and get away from a screen and technology and a tablet and go out, go on a slide, go learn how to monkey bar. Or we're not building slides like we did when we were young where you burn yourself and you you light yourself on fire by touching them. We, we have great technology, we have great, um, things out there. I would actually like to I think make a separate amendment that will, a second motion rather, that will not work as an amendment. I, I think that would be the way that I have to do it. Um, I will re- I'll tell you what it is and you can tell me if I can make that as an amendment or if it's far, way too far out to left field that it'll have to be a separate motion.
May I have, um, some clarity first from administration with regards to this report? Before we go there, it may satisfy what you're looking for.
Chair, I was gonna weigh in. Um, just so you know, this was one of the grants that administration has authority to approve. We already did approve it. We're just asking you to accept the report so the council's aware. Um, we're required to tell council when we donated a ball cap and two pens. Uh, we thought it would probably be appropriate, uh, to advise council when we approve a donation of five thousand dollars for a playground. We've already done that. It's done. We're just advising council that we did it and it's a great cause. So you're not actually debating whether or not to approve the grant, we already did it.
Yeah, thank you. And that's the clarity I was looking for on page eighty seven. It does mention, uh, Castle School Council Fundraising, uh, council five thousand dollars. So I was just, for clarity, was going to just ask, is that exactly what you had said, um, the approved grant? If I'm not mistaken, is that the approved grant that we're referring to?
That's the approved grant.
Thank you very much. So that's the clarity. So it's already done.
I'll make another motion after we approve this one.
All right, all right. Is everybody ready to go forward with receiving this reporter's information? Yes, all those in favor? Thank you. That passes, uh, seven to zero and Councilor.
Everybody was in favor of that.
Yes, seven and zero. Councilor, um, Cromwell, your motion, please.
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna word it a little bit differently now, but I would like uh, County Council to direct administration to donate another twenty five hundred dollars to the Casland Playground Project. Realizing now that they do not have a playground at all, um, I definitely on board with making sure we have a safe place for our children to play. So I'd like to see that number put up another twenty five hundred dollars.
Okay, so that would be over and above the, uh, initial grant, um, okay? Is there any discussion? Alrighty, on the motion that, uh, council directs administration to, uh, include another twenty five hundred dollars to the Casland School Council Fundraising Council, I'm assuming that's where it would go? Is there any discussion with, oh, for the playground project? Correct, okay, so we'll add for the playground project. Right, all right. Conversation, Councilor Minz.
So we, we've already approved five thousand dollars for this and now we wanna approve another twenty five hundred, which, which, which is, which is okay, but we have other partners in the area that aren't proving anything yet either, right? So, I don't know. Do we need to, do we need to approve more right now or I, I don't, I just don't under- don't understand the reasoning why we wanna add more at this point.
If I may, Madam Chair, we were just told that we have one of our hamlets where a bunch of our children live and rural residents that have absolutely no playground left in their community. I don't know what other partners you, uh, my colleague might be talking about. It is a Athabasca County hamlet with Athabasca County residents who are remote, unlike people that live within fifteen kilometers of Athabasca. Uh, it is a chore and a challenge to come in and go to things like our playgrounds, our splash parks, our multiplexes. We have to use what local infrastructure we have available for our mo- more remote hamlets. So the value in adding twenty five hundred dollars for the children of that community uh, to have a safe place to play is invaluable. I don't think you can put a number on having somewhere safe that children can go. We, you know, we can get to the, the argument and talk about, well, they can go play out in the forest. Well, they can. And, you know, they can carry some bear spray and a crossbow and protect, we, we can go down a rabbit hole. Um, my point is, they, they have nothing in a community. We have we have funds available. Let's help out the children in our community and build them a safe place.
Thank you. You're good. All right. Um, and I guess I, I will, I do have a question for administration with regards to the Community Assistance Grant twenty twenty five budget. Uh, it is set at thirty five thousand. If, um, we have more requests coming in, we do have the ability to amend that budget. Is that accurate? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, you could take from reserves.
Thank you very much. All right.
If the River Rats can move money around, so can we.
There you go. All right, so on Councilor Cromwell's motion to provide an additional twenty five hundred dollars to the Castle School, a council fundraising council for their playground project, all those in favor? That was one, two, three, four, five, and opposed? Two. So, thank you, that motion passes. Alrighty, that's seven point three, we're on to seven point five, the Financial Variance Report on page one thirty one of your agenda. And, um, the recommendation here is to receive the April thirtieth, twenty twenty five Financial Variance Report and bank statement as information. Um, Council, Council Cromwell would like to, uh, put that recommendation forward uh, in that motion. Would administration like to weigh in on this report?
Madam Chair and members of council, um, before you is the, the variance report and I just want to point out that our managers didn't get a chance to weigh in and make any, uh, transactions to, to adjust some of the coding. Uh, because we were dealing with a fire and, uh, everybody was quite busy. But we felt it was still important for council to receive the report. So within the report, you'll see some changes that we'll be making. Uh, we wanna sit down with the managers to make sure that, uh, we get the codes right. Uh, but we did, we did go to an extent of, um, outlining some of the changes that you know, the public might see that are off. We just wanted to provide some explanations.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Um, I know these reports are extremely, uh, onerous to complete and, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into it. So I really appreciate the heads up on all the different items that are listed on our, uh, and request for decision and, and the administrative report here. Um, did anybody else want to have any further discussion on the financial reports? Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
Um, I, through the chair, there's sort of two questions for administration. Are there any? First one is, are there any items in the, in the variance report that concern you? That you wanna draw the council's attention in terms of, you know, being significantly under or over budget? Or otherwise?
We're just missing out, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that question and through the chair. Um, there's one section under road construction that, uh, we'll be making some recommendations to council. Once we get a chance to talk to the director and the manager, uh, there's just some coding issues in there. We probably didn't catch it when we were developing the budget. So there's some expenditures in there and, you know, in fairness to staff, they're trying to do code things accurately, but the codes just aren't available within the budget. So uh, we'll likely bring that to council for, you know, probably a formal budget transfer.
Awesome, thank you.
And the second question, um, on, uh, the water budget, certainly we're forty percent of the way through the projected deficit at a third of the way through the year. Are you at all worried that that's, uh, going to escalate? Are we gonna be able to keep that within budget?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
When I, when I look at our net loss on water, we're a third of the way through the year to the end of April and we're forty percent of the way through our projected deficit. And I'm just wondering if you have, uh, a comment on the solution you're starting to think of.
I'll comment, I'll, I'll comment. I mean, this is directly related to the rates that council just set. At the end of the year, the deficit's going to be what the deficit is. Um, we really don't know what it will be. This will be a moving target as water usage varies. Um, and it was noted to council that we, this would be a subsidized service. How much? We're unsure.
Thank you. And, and I also will, um, mention it's the summer months and sales of water will increase greatly. So I would imagine that will, uh, work itself out for sure. Is there any other, uh, further discussion? Alrighty, so on the recommendation from Councilor Cromwell to receive the April thirtieth, twenty twenty five Financial Variance Report and bank statement as information. Uh, for ready for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you. And it doesn't look like there's any opposed. That's seven and oh. And, uh, next item, we have seven point six revised fire fleet replacement, page one seventy six, it's one seventy seven of your package. Get there here? Alrighty, so the recommendation here is that council approves the purchase of the four fire apparatus as identified through the current capital budget. And I, I apologize, I, uh, didn't pull the capital budget, but I see it sitting right over here. Are we able to identify the districts that these, uh, items are going to?
Uh, Madam Chair, so the, uh, revised plan, we will be coming back in camera later today to go through that plan in depth. Um, but these units benefit, uh, four different distri- four different districts and it does result in a truck shuffle. So replacing a vehicle in one station, moving it to another. So it, it will, it will ultimately benefit five different, uh, districts. Um, and they will be going after the vehicles in, in worse condition. So the ones that are primarily benefiting from this right now are Rochester, Collington and, uh, Richmond Park are, are the three biggies. And then we have trickle-down effect to other, other stations as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, is there a motion that someone with Councilor Hall would, as recommended? All right, is there any further discussion, Councilor Anderson?
The admin report, uh, says that this change is being made because a unit is being purchased from R and R funds. Um, however, do with regards to our, uh, purchasing goods and services policy, I don't recall us approving that purchase. So will that also be coming back to us to make sure that it's in alignment with the policy and?
Uh, uh, through the chair to Councilor Anderson, this will absolutely be discussed in camera later.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Going once?
I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, uh, Councilor, oh, go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
I'd like to move to table this item until after the closed session.
Table this item till after the closed session items. All right, that's non-debatable. If everybody's ready to go forward with tabling this item till after the enclosed discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Six and one, we will table this item after closed item sessions, just making a note here for myself. So we will go to item, uh, seven point seven, the multiplex request, page one seventy eight of your agenda package. Um, and again, this, uh, recommendation here is that council approve the requests from the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society to utilize the ACI funds for the immediate purchase of two boilers for the aquatic center. And I can't remember. Was that yourself that asked for that? Okay.
Yeah, I, and I'll move the recommended motion. I just, uh, just wanted to, I don't know, just say great work by the arms committee and, and, uh, people working at the multiplex to be able to obtain a couple of boilers. So, so that's positive. And, uh, I just like to just send that out there.
Awesome, thank you. I echo, um, that. I think this is great news for the multiplex and, um, and good work is being done for sure. Thank you. All right, so on the motion, um, as Councilor Minz has directed that council approve the request from the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society to utilize the ACI funds for the immediate purchase of two boilers for the aquatic center. Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, so that's seven and oh, thank you. All right, seven point nine is the next item on page one eighty two. And that is for the Trans-Canada Trail Spring Care Cleanup. Um, Councilor Hall?
I have no comments, I just wanted it on the agenda.
You wanted it on the agenda, okay. So the recommendation here is to direct administration to advertise a volunteer call out for the June fourteenth, twenty twenty five Trans-Canada Trail Spring Care Cleanup on Athabasca County social media and website channels, using twenty twenty fours ad as a template. And further to add the Athabasca Landing Trail, uh, the Trans-Canada Trail and the Peace River Trail, also the Trans-Canada Trail to the Athabasca County website under Parks and Recreation. Is there just?
I'll happily own that.
You would like that motion? Okay, Councilor Cromwell, is there any discussion? If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and opposed? That's two. So five and two, thank you. And, um, quarter to eleven, so we are moving to item seven point, uh, ten donations, page one eighty three. Um, the recommendation here is to receive the report for information. I added this item, um, to, for discussion, so I'll just, um, go forward. I find that the letter that, uh, Rocky Lane Fairways sent was, uh, really great information and something that not only they can be very proud of, but as a county, we should be very proud of as well. And I'd like to point out, uh, the one paragraph that says, did you know that disc golf is one of the fastest growing sports in the world? And Rocky Lane Fairways is becoming a destination place to play. We are currently ranked number one out of one hundred courses in Alberta and number four out of seven hundred and ninety courses in Canada. I think that is absolutely amazing and incredible and something that, uh, we definitely, um, should very be, very be proud of and, and promote as well. Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
As it relates to the item then, I would like to move the motion to receive it for information, but to add the words and to direct administration to provide advice on revisions to policy sixty two seventy five and to bring it to council by the end of August twenty twenty five. Um, in speaking to that, I think it's silly that administration is sending, spending time writing up an admin report on hundred dollar items, two pens and a hat, as I think we've heard today. I, I think council needs to know this stuff. I just think there's a better, more efficient streamlined way to get this out there and we have so many things that we're asking our admin to do. Surely we can give them the break of, uh, telling us what they think about how, eh, whether this is a good use of their time or not. So I think there's better ways to get this information out. We need to know the county's present and doing stuff. This is, this is a bad use of their time. And so I, I'd just like to give, uh, admin the opportunity to rewrite the policy and give us the benefit of their advice on whether this actually makes sense.
Thank you.
Can I just get that, uh, second part of that motion repeated? You were, my hearing on this side is not as good as you would like to.
To direct administration to provide advice on revisions to policy sixty two seventy five and to bring to council by the end of August twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I appreciate that. I agree. I, I think that this is something that could really go into the information portion of our, uh, agenda. Um, I really like seeing these letters and getting this information from, from these groups. I think it's great to have that uh, and share that out, um, with our public and our residents. Um, I do also have a, a, a secondary question and I'm not sure if administration's able to answer, but, um, our, and I haven't looked and I'm very sorry. I know the website's, you know, looking really good. We had, and our previous website mentioned different, um, We had, and our previous website mentioned different entities that we have within the county is golf courses, Skeleton Lake, et cetera. But I never did see Rocky Lane Fairways. Is that something that's still on our website, the new website? And if so, is it something that we would be able to add, to include them as well? As part of our recreation items?
I'll do a double check. If they're not there, I can very easily add them.
That's fantastic. Do we, we don't need a motion for that? Or do we need a motion? Okay.
I can just do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Alright, so well done Rocky Lane Fairways. Looking forward to their upcoming tournament. That's going to be excellent. So on the motion that we have on the floor to receive the report for information and to review policy sixty two seven five, for administration to provide advice and bring that back at the end of August. If everybody is ready for that vote, all those in favor. Thank you. That's seven and oh. I didn't see any opposed. Awesome. Alright, ten to eleven, I'm watching the time here. We are moving on to information, eight point one C, page one ninety eight of your agenda. Where are we at here? Alright, so this one I asked to be added. So if I may start with regards to this information. I'll throw a, it's probably poorly worded, but I'll, I'll attempt to throw a motion on the floor here with regards to the seniors symposium and that we do historically yearly. And with regards to what the government of Alberta is also asking of municipalities. I would like to put a motion to direct admin to complete the sample community declaration provided by the government of Alberta and email the signed copy by May thirty first as directed by the Ministry of Seniors, Community and Social Services. I think it's a really great opportunity to, for the county to use these declarations for seniors week as we do celebrate our seniors during the first week of June. And it is a large demographic here in the, in the county, and I think that it just would be really nice to see that we do that. So just thought I'd put that out there if council would like to discuss. Councillor Anderson, and then councillor Chamsick.
We currently have a policy sixty eight oh five that specifically says Athabasca County Council will not proclaim any special days, weeks or time periods for any reason. And administration shall respond to any such inquiries by declining to make any such proclamations. So I understand the intent of this, but I think that the right path forward would be to amend the policy prior to going against it and doing a proclamation against the policy because that way you're treating everybody the same and not just singling out one specific topic.
Okay, is it possible, and, and I totally understand what you're saying, and, and yeah, sixty eight oh five definitely should be on the table for amendment. I'm wondering if we can add that to the motion and further to bring back policy sixty eight oh five for further discussion and amendment. Is that something that council would like to entertain? Would that be a friendly amendment that we can add to that motion to bring back sixty eight oh five? Yeah? Are we okay with this? Go ahead.
I'm opposed because I think you should amend the policy prior to doing the declaration. I don't think you should do the declaration before you amend the policy.
Okay. I think then I'll add an amendment and we can work on that amendment. So, and that would be to bring back policy sixty eight oh five for for amendment and discussion. Is that okay with?
Can you repeat all of your motion?
Sorry?
Can you repeat all of your motion or perhaps?
So the amendment or the?
Both. I want to hear how this is.
Okay, so the amendment would be to direct administration to bring back policy sixty eight oh five for amendment and discussion by council? Amendment and or discussion? Discussion and or amendment? I guess would be the way to go. Go ahead councillor.
Isn't this June second?
Pardon me?
Isn't this declaration June second?
Yeah, it would have to be emailed May thirty first.
Which is day after tomorrow? And we need to look at the policy before that?
Well, I think, I, if I, I will ask for administration's advice. I think that council can make the decision to go outside a policy. So I would like to ask and confirm with administration if that is accurate.
Madam Chair, it's my interpretation that council can go against its own policy.
Yes, thank you. So this would, the amendment would be to satisfy dealing with the policy sixty eight oh five in the future. Alright, any further discussion on that amendment? Councillor Chamsick?
Well, you know, I personally, I love it. I think it's a, a good idea with all the great events coming up in this next week. You know, I mean, as we've spoken earlier today, our seniors being a huge demographic. And I think it's time, you know, as much as things change and I don't, I personally feel that this is an important declaration. You know, it's a huge demographic of our people and I don't see any harm noting them.
Thank you. Councillor Hall.
I feel like this is really putting the cart before the horse. We have a policy that prohibits declarations and it's set up by prior councils for good reason. We need, I think we should get admins advice on the proclamation policy. We've, we've never discussed this. And for me, it warrants full consideration before jumping ahead and acting without the benefit of administrative advice or even a council discussion. And so I agree that it'd be more appropriate to consider advice from our administration on the policy and engage in a discussion that considers all of that. And I, I mean, on the side, I also kind of think that if the intent was to, to push this forward in this way, it should have come through as an RFD so that there would have been time to reflect on it and consider it rather than being asked to, to make a decision on something that shows up in the admin or the info section when we already clearly have a policy that prohibits it. So like, while I may support the idea of having some declarations, I think it would be important for us to to not jump ahead and to have a robust discussion first and understand why we don't do them before we just start arbitrarily doing them.
Thank you. Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you very much. I've always been and always will be an advocate for our seniors. We're talking about, yes, we have a policy about declaration and yes, policy is meant or is able to be bent and or blatantly ignored by council or worked around as we need to. It is not meant to completely tie our hands. It is not a bylaw. And to, to declare, to declare seniors week without pulling the policy apart is no big ask. We have a huge population of seniors in our area, both current and past, and, and many coming up who have given their lives, you know, spent in Athabasca County. You know, we're not talking about how, I'm going to propose January eighteenth is Cromwell day after we talk about the policy. We're not going there yet. But to, to support our seniors, it, it's a no brainer. I, I don't understand how we can argue about caring about a huge part of our population, giving a little bit of recognition. We're not rewriting the workings of our council. We are not changing anything but going, thank you very much for everything that you have done. We value and appreciate you. I, I think it's no different than caring about our children, caring about our seniors.
Thank you. And is there any further discussion on this amendment? Alrighty, so on the amendment to direct administration to bring back policy sixty eight oh five at a future, I guess it would be, would it be committee of the whole for discussion and possible amendment? We're ready for that. All those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposed. Are you four? Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Seven and oh on the amendment. So on the original motion to direct administration to complete the sample community, um, community declaration provided by the government of Alberta and email the signed copy by March, or May thirty first as directed by Minister, Ministry of Seniors, Community and Social Services. And further to bring back policy sixty eight oh five for discussion and amendment at a committee of the whole meeting. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? And opposed? Six and one. Thank you. And I believe we're getting ready for our delegation. Does, it is eleven, but do we have a couple of minutes just for people to refill their coffees? And so if we could do that, be back by eleven oh five, please.
Good morning, everyone. We are back from our slight recess there. Councillor Cromwell is now joining us via Zoom. And we are at the stage of our agenda, which is our delegation four point one annual update from the Northern Light Library System, and we have James McDonald here with us. I, yeah, you'll need the microphone. I'm not sure if we need, are you familiar with everyone? Do we need introduction?
No, I'm pretty familiar with you all now.
Great. I think you know us all well. So thank you so much for being here. Welcome. And please go ahead with your presentation.
Well, thank you. I'll start by just thanking you for your commitment to Northern Lights and for all the work you put in. Your councillor Chamsuck is on our executive committee. She puts in a lot of work and so we appreciate the service on that level. Northern Lights, as you know, is one of seven regional library systems in the province. You have the fortune of being placed geographically in the best of the seven regional library system, Northern Lights. We have six, over sixty participating communities. I say communities because we do have now four First Nations. And we have fifty odd public libraries. So that's pretty impressive. I don't know of any other municipal community program where you're all signed, like that many municipalities are signed on to one thing. So it's very, very exciting. Serving your community or your county, you have, of course, the Athabasca Library, Grassland, Wandering River, Boyle and Rochester Municipal Libraries. So I don't know if you, did we send out the twenty twenty four? Okay, good. So you're looking at the same numbers I'm, I'm looking at. So in twenty twenty four, nearly seventy two hundred eBooks and e-audiobooks were circulated in the community. And fifty one thousand four hundred-ish physical books were trucked out here by our vans to, to these various communities for, for your residents, which is, which is a lot of books. If your community members were to just say, hey, you know what? Forget libraries. We'll just buy everything we need. Send all that money to Jeff Bezos. They would have spent one point nine million dollars to do that. Hence why Jeff Bezos is so rich. Your cost to be a member of Northern Lights Library System was forty three thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. We don't use that just for operations. There's capital in there, sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars of that siphoned off for what we call book allotment. So the libraries have access to purchasing books. Most of those books they purchase through us. They can purchase on their own and we reimburse them or whatever for that. So really, it just, if you're just looking at the physical circulation. So really, just if you're just looking at the physical circulation numbers, So really, just if you're just looking at the physical circulation numbers, So really, just if you're just looking at the physical circulation numbers, which we do a lot more than that, you're getting back almost seventy dollars for every dollar invested in Northern Lights. which we do a lot more than that, you're getting back almost seventy dollars for every dollar invested in Northern Lights. which we do a lot more than that, you're getting back almost seventy dollars for every dollar invested in Northern Lights. And speaking of all the things we do, I don't have time, nor do you want me to talk about all the things we do. And speaking of all the things we do, I don't have time, nor do you want me to talk about all the things we do. And speaking of all the things we do, I don't have time, nor do you want me to talk about all the things we do. But I will leave this service catalog here for your perusal. But I will leave this service catalog here for your perusal. But I will leave this service catalog here for your perusal. It just kind of goes through the various things that we do provide your community. It just kind of goes through the various things that we do provide your community. It just kind of goes through the various things that we do provide your community. One of the things I will mention is that we do have professional librarians One of the things I will mention is that we do have professional librarians One of the things I will mention is that we do have professional librarians that by law were required to employ consultants. that by law were required to employ consultants. that by law were required to employ consultants. These folks have graduate degrees in library studies. They know policy. They know collection development. These folks have graduate degrees in library studies. They know policy. They know collection development. These folks have graduate degrees in library studies. They know policy. They know collection development. They know a variety of things. And if they don't know it, they have access to the people that do know it. They know a variety of things. And if they don't know it, they have access to the people that do know it. They know a variety of things. And if they don't know it, they have access to the people that do know it. And so your, the staff in these libraries can contact them and work with them on a variety of topics, And so your, the staff in these libraries can contact them and work with them on a variety of topics, And so your, the staff in these libraries can contact them and work with them on a variety of topics, including the rest of our staff. including the rest of our staff. including the rest of our staff. We estimate, you know, we took at least two hundred and thirty-three calls from your libraries in twenty twenty four. We estimate, you know, we took at least two hundred and thirty-three calls from your libraries in twenty twenty four. We estimate, you know, we took at least two hundred and thirty-three calls from your libraries in twenty twenty four. We're really being conservative here, but we estimate that would have cost twenty grand alone just in staff time. We're really being conservative here, but we estimate that would have cost twenty grand alone just in staff time. We're really being conservative here, but we estimate that would have cost twenty grand alone just in staff time. The reality is you wouldn't be able to hire a team to do that for that kind of price. The reality is you wouldn't be able to hire a team to do that for that kind of price. The reality is you wouldn't be able to hire a team to do that for that kind of price. But we had to put a dollar figure on it there somewhere. But we had to put a dollar figure on it there somewhere. But we had to put a dollar figure on it there somewhere. Nearly seventeen hundred books purchased by your libraries through us in twenty twenty four. Nearly seventeen hundred books purchased by your libraries through us in twenty twenty four. Nearly seventeen hundred books purchased by your libraries through us in twenty twenty four. Purchasing through us because we buy in bulk. We actually bought more than four hundred thousand dollars worth of books in twenty twenty four. Purchasing through us because we buy in bulk. We actually bought more than four hundred thousand dollars worth of books in twenty twenty four. Purchasing through us because we buy in bulk. We actually bought more than four hundred thousand dollars worth of books in twenty twenty four. They saved sixteen thousand dollars just in discounts there, plus an additional almost seven grand They saved sixteen thousand dollars just in discounts there, plus an additional almost seven grand They saved sixteen thousand dollars just in discounts there, plus an additional almost seven grand in the processing and the cataloging and all that for those libraries. So you're getting quite a bit of that. in the processing and the cataloging and all that for those libraries. So you're getting quite a bit of that. in the processing and the cataloging and all that for those libraries. So you're getting quite a bit of that. Nearly sixteen hundred households in the county have a library card in them. Nearly sixteen hundred households in the county have a library card in them. Nearly sixteen hundred households in the county have a library card in them. So that doesn't mean that those are the only people using the library, by the way. So that doesn't mean that those are the only people using the library. So that doesn't mean that those are the only people using the library. By the way, there are many people that come through the doors that use the Wi-Fi, By the way, there are many people that come through the doors that use the Wi-Fi, There are many people that come through the doors that use the Wi-Fi, that use the computers, that go to the programs, that use the computers, that go to the programs, that don't, might not necessarily get a library card. So. that use the computers, that go to the programs, that don't, might not necessarily get a library card. So. that don't, might not necessarily get a library card. So. So I'll just touch on a few milestones in twenty twenty four, a few things. So I'll just touch on a few milestones in twenty twenty four, a few things. So I'll just touch on a few milestones in twenty twenty four, a few things. All the libraries got new websites. We host all your websites and support them in that. All the libraries got new websites. We host all your websites and support them in that. All the libraries got new websites. We host all your websites and support them in that. So we're excited about that. They've got much better functionality, the ability, for example, So we're excited about that. They've got much better functionality, the ability, for example, So we're excited about that. They've got much better functionality, the ability, for example, to take registrations for programming, for reading programs, for kids and tots, or whatever. to take registrations for programming, for reading programs, for kids and tots, or whatever. to take registrations for programming, for reading programs, for kids and tots, or whatever. They can register online, which is great and helps them manage those programs. They can register online, which is great and helps them manage those programs. They can register online, which is great and helps them manage those programs. The other thing we added, we actually built a website, I think I mentioned here before, called GoLibraries. The other thing we added, we actually built a website, I think I mentioned here before, called GoLibraries. The other thing we added, we actually built a website, I think I mentioned here before, called GoLibraries. It's just GoLibrary.ca. If you can't spell library, we also got the domain GoLiberry.ca, so it'll take you there as well. It's just GoLibrary.ca. If you can't spell library, we also got the domain GoLiberry.ca, so it'll take you there as well. It's just GoLibrary.ca. If you can't spell library, we also got the domain GoLiberry.ca, so it'll take you there as well. But that site is designed to allow you to do self-registration. But that site is designed to allow you to do self-registration. But that site is designed to allow you to do self-registration. So meaning, and the GoLibrary site is pointed specifically to people in First Nations, So meaning, and the GoLibrary site is pointed specifically to people in First Nations, So meaning, and the GoLibrary site is pointed specifically to people in First Nations, helping them identify the closest library to them and then register online. helping them identify the closest library to them and then register online. helping them identify the closest library to them and then register online. But we built that same technology into the library websites. But we built that same technology into the library websites. But we built that same technology into the library websites. So if your county resident was like, oh, my, finds out about the library, oh, I'd really like to take out that book, whatever, So if your county resident was like, oh, my, finds out about the library, oh, I'd really like to take out that book, whatever, So if your county resident was like, oh, my, finds out about the library, oh, I'd really like to take out that book, whatever, but I don't want to get into the library and do all, they can go onto the website, register in a matter of minutes. but I don't want to get into the library and do all, they can go onto the website, register in a matter of minutes. but I don't want to get into the library and do all, they can go onto the website, register in a matter of minutes. We tried to make it as simple as Netflix, sign up for Netflix, except we don't ask for your credit card. We tried to make it as simple as Netflix, sign up for Netflix, except we don't ask for your credit card. We tried to make it as simple as Netflix, sign up for Netflix, except we don't ask for your credit card. So they could do that, get registered, and immediately start using the electronic resources. So they could do that, get registered, and immediately start using the electronic resources. So they could do that, get registered, and immediately start using the electronic resources. Right away, no waiting. So if it's Sunday at midnight, they can do that, which we're very excited about. Right away, no waiting. So if it's Sunday at midnight, they can do that, which we're very excited about. Right away, no waiting. So if it's Sunday at midnight, they can do that, which we're very excited about. And we've seen quite a bit of use of that, so we're grateful for it. And we've seen quite a bit of use of that, so we're grateful for it. And we've seen quite a bit of use of that, so we're grateful for it. The other thing that happened in twenty twenty four, which was pretty awesome, The other thing that happened in twenty twenty four, which was pretty awesome, The other thing that happened in twenty twenty four, which was pretty awesome, was we did welcome Kehewin Cree Nation as a member of Northern Lights. was we did welcome Kehewin Cree Nation as a member of Northern Lights. was we did welcome Kehewin Cree Nation as a member of Northern Lights. I'm just working with them to get SuperNet installed in their, what's going to be their new library location. I'm just working with them to get SuperNet installed in their, what's going to be their new library location. So we're very excited. So we're very excited. And Art Smith Aviation Academy, which is a school in Cold Lake, contracts with us now. And Art Smith Aviation Academy, which is a school in Cold Lake, contracts with us now. So it's our first contract service to a public, to a school library. So it's our first contract service to a public, to a school library. It's a great partnership. So if you're aware of, you know, have connections with your school and you It's a great partnership. So if you're aware of, you know, have connections with your school and you send them my way, I'm sure we can save them money and connect them to the wider system. send them my way, I'm sure we can save them money and connect them to the wider system. I mentioned that we spent four hundred thousand dollars on books last year, I mentioned that we spent four hundred thousand dollars on books last year, but we are connected to three other regional library systems. but we are connected to three other regional library systems. And so altogether, you know, you're probably looking at one point five million dollars worth of new books And so altogether, you know, you're probably looking at one point five million dollars worth of new books that your patrons have access to. The catalog itself has over three million items in it. that your patrons have access to. The catalog itself has over three million items in it. They can request them and we ship them out to you, right? They can request them and we ship them out to you, right? So it's very, very cool. So it's very, very cool. So some really cool initiatives in twenty twenty five. And the first one's already done and it's available. So some really cool initiatives in twenty twenty five. And the first one's already done and it's available. Wireless printing. So you can go to your libraries and print from your iPad, your phone, whatever, Wireless printing. So you can go to your libraries and print from your iPad, your phone, whatever, which is a really great security feature. which is a really great security feature. And it's a great privacy thing, because before, often what would happen is patrons would come in And it's a great privacy thing, because before, often what would happen is patrons would come in and send their divorce papers or their medical papers or whatever by email to the library manager. and send their divorce papers or their medical papers or whatever by email to the library manager. And so unfortunately, library manager won't know everything about everybody in town anymore, And so unfortunately, library manager won't know everything about everybody in town anymore, but they, you will be able to get your printing done. but they, you will be able to get your printing done. And in fact, you could actually print from home. You could print from right here. And in fact, you could actually print from home. You could print from right here. You can find the, you have to know the code, but once you get that, you could print You can find the, you have to know the code, but once you get that, you could print and then go down to the library later and release the job. So it's kind of handy. and then go down to the library later and release the job. So it's kind of handy. The other great thing, TrackPak Plus, we are getting a brand new catalog in twenty twenty five. The other great thing, TrackPak Plus, we are getting a brand new catalog in twenty twenty five. The front end is going to be all new, which, you know, lipstick on it, I guess, is one thing, The front end is going to be all new, which, you know, lipstick on it, I guess, is one thing, but it's, the functionality is going to be much, much improved. but it's, the functionality is going to be much, much improved. So people will be able to find the things they're looking for. So people will be able to find the things they're looking for. One of my favorite things that does is, right now, if you search for an item, One of my favorite things that does is, right now, if you search for an item, you might see like the paperback and the hardback and the Blu-ray and the DVD and the audiobook. you might see like the paperback and the hardback and the Blu-ray and the DVD and the audiobook. And it all, you know, and you got to scroll through it and stuff's all, they roll all that up into one, one record And it all, you know, and you got to scroll through it and stuff's all, they roll all that up into one, one record and make it really simple for you to be able to identify exactly what you're getting, right? and make it really simple for you to be able to identify exactly what you're getting, right? So looking forward to that. I know it sounds silly, but it is a big improvement. So looking forward to that. I know it sounds silly, but it is a big improvement. So that should roll out in the third quarter of this year. So that should roll out in the third quarter of this year. And finally, the other thing we're going to pilot in the third quarter as well, fourth quarter actually, of twenty twenty five, And finally, the other thing we're going to pilot in the third quarter as well, fourth quarter actually, of twenty twenty five, is some shelf ready. So we're working with a few of our vendors is some shelf ready. So we're working with a few of our vendors to get the books delivered to us all ready to go, where we're not doing it necessarily in-house. to get the books delivered to us all ready to go, where we're not doing it necessarily in-house. They come with the stickers and the labels and all that sort of stuff. They come with the stickers and the labels and all that sort of stuff. And then we can send them out directly to libraries. We hope that will speed things up a little bit And then we can send them out directly to libraries. We hope that will speed things up a little bit and reduce some of our costs. So we are working hard on the efficiency side. and reduce some of our costs. So we are working hard on the efficiency side. So I can take a deep breath. That's a lot of information. So I can take a deep breath. That's a lot of information. I'll also leave our budget, twenty twenty five budget and our plan of service. I'll also leave our budget, twenty twenty five budget and our plan of service. I will say, as far as budget goes, we are continuing to push the one and a half percent increase. I will say, as far as budget goes, we are continuing to push the one and a half percent increase. We're working hard to be as efficient as possible, for sure, We're working hard to be as efficient as possible, for sure, but also recognize that costs continue to go up. but also recognize that costs continue to go up. We're trying to make it manageable for our municipalities in budgeting. We're trying to make it manageable for our municipalities in budgeting. And so we're committed to that one and a half percent. So right now, I think your bill is five dollars forty seven cents And so we're committed to that one and a half percent. So right now, I think your bill is five dollars forty seven cents per resident, based on the twenty nineteen population list. per resident, based on the twenty nineteen population list. It'll go to five dollars and fifty five cents in twenty twenty six. So. It'll go to five dollars and fifty five cents in twenty twenty six. So. Yeah. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Yeah. Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Of course, always happy to have you. I'm just wondering, have we seen any success with the GoLibrary, like in this region? Of course, always happy to have you. I'm just wondering, have we seen any success with the GoLibrary, like in this region?
Yeah, you know, it'd be good if I break down the, get the stats specifically for your region. Yeah, you know, it'd be good if I break down the, get the stats specifically for your region. I'll try to get that for you next time we meet up in a meeting. I don't have those off the top of my head. I'll try to get that for you next time we meet up in a meeting. I don't have those off the top of my head. But I will say that in twenty twenty four, But I will say that in twenty twenty four, we added a thousand members, new members from Indigenous communities in the region. we added a thousand members, new members from Indigenous communities in the region. There's only thirteen thousand people. So that's incredibly significant. There's only thirteen thousand people. So that's incredibly significant. I know there's quite a bit from this region, like Keekano and Buffalo Lake and Beaver Lake I know there's quite a bit from this region, like Keekano and Buffalo Lake and Beaver Lake have really taken this up, but I'll try and get you the specific numbers of that next time. have really taken this up, but I'll try and get you the specific numbers of that next time.
That'd be great. And you know, I just want to say, one of the other great things about the services that's awesome That'd be great. And you know, I just want to say, one of the other great things about the services that's awesome is that, you know, being a chair of a board, meeting with our consultant as well is that, you know, being a chair of a board, meeting with our consultant as well is another great service that just enhances our level of service in all of our libraries. is another great service that just enhances our level of service in all of our libraries. Values statements, James, to me are just exactly that. They're invaluable. Values statements, James, to me are just exactly that. They're invaluable. And you know, it's, I appreciate the amount of work and I know all the amount of efficiencies And you know, it's, I appreciate the amount of work and I know all the amount of efficiencies that we put into the board to bring it to the table. So thank you for your time. that we put into the board to bring it to the table. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Please, Counselor Hall. Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Please, Counselor Hall.
What would it take to move your physical operations to our region? What would it take to move your physical operations to our region?
Oh, sheesh. Yeah, that's a great question. What would it take? Probably money. Oh, sheesh. Yeah, that's a great question. What would it take? Probably money. I, I mean, at the end of the day, we have a building in Elk Point that we received for a dollar back in two thousand. I, I mean, at the end of the day, we have a building in Elk Point that we received for a dollar back in two thousand. The government helped us, provincial government helped us to The government helped us, provincial government helped us to
Needed help for that? Need help for that?
Renovate that. What's that? Renovate that. What's that? Yeah, if you could sell, if we could sell Yeah, if you could sell, if we could sell We don't have a loan. We did get some grants for that, that we renovated in twenty twelve. We don't have a loan. We did get some grants for that, that we renovated in twenty twelve. It is larger than we need. It is larger than we need. You know, times have changed. Our consultants now generally are working remotely out of the Edmonton area usually. You know, times have changed. Our consultants now generally are working remotely out of the Edmonton area usually. That's worked really, really well because they're closer to you folks. That's worked really, really well because they're closer to you folks. But we do get some revenue out of that as we've leased out offices to some accounting firms. But we do get some revenue out of that as we've leased out offices to some accounting firms. And actually, Scott Seer holds an office there in the building as well. And actually, Scott Seer holds an office there in the building as well. So that has helped to defray some of the costs of running that building. So that has helped to defray some of the costs of running that building. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we need a facility and we have a pretty, pretty good one. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we need a facility and we have a pretty, pretty good one. And Elk Point, we've been treated really well. So. And Elk Point, we've been treated really well. So.
And then secondly, can you give us an update on the plans for the Rochester Library? And then secondly, can you give us an update on the plans for the Rochester Library?
Yeah, I don't have much that I can tell you. I did speak to the library manager yesterday. Yeah, I don't have much that I can tell you. I did speak to the library manager yesterday. They were in Elk Point as we had a meeting. They were in Elk Point as we had a meeting. And really, at this point, I don't know much outside of what the school has said. And really, at this point, I don't know much outside of what the school has said. So it really comes down to Counselor Chamzuk will know much more being on the board there. So it really comes down to Counselor Chamzuk will know much more being on the board there. But we are there to support them, whatever the outcome is. But we are there to support them, whatever the outcome is.
If you'd like, we are waiting a meeting. If you'd like, we are waiting a meeting.
Sorry, can you just repeat that? Sorry. Sorry, can you just repeat that? Sorry.
We are waiting some meetings with us, you was also. We are waiting some meetings with us, you was also.
Okay, so in the works. Does anybody else have any further questions, comments? Okay, so in the works. Does anybody else have any further questions, comments? Alrighty, I would like to commend you and I'd like to commend the board. Alrighty, I would like to commend you and I'd like to commend the board. There is some amazing work that's going on and your success stories that you've shared with us today are absolutely amazing. There is some amazing work that's going on and your success stories that you've shared with us today are absolutely amazing. And I'm just really excited to, I have to go on this goal, the, your GoLibrary self-registration website. And I'm just really excited to, I have to go on this goal, the, your GoLibrary self-registration website. My, my library card is expired. My, my library card is expired. So, and it just expired, hey, you know. So, and it just expired, hey, you know. But yeah, this is an excellent way to be able to do that and to do that remotely. But yeah, this is an excellent way to be able to do that and to do that remotely. And I know a lot more people are, like you mentioned, as we heard from you in the Summer Village, And I know a lot more people are, like you mentioned, as we heard from you in the Summer Village, that you were listening to a book on the, on the way up in your, in your vehicle. that you were listening to a book on the, on the way up in your, in your vehicle. And I think that is really super cool. And I think that is really super cool. So yeah, you guys are doing amazing work here. The region is so appreciative to have you here and thank you. So yeah, you guys are doing amazing work here. The region is so appreciative to have you here and thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Board two, alright. Board two, alright.
Yeah, and same thing, Dr. James, it was a great presentation that you did for the Summer Villages last weekend and that. Yeah, and same thing, Dr. James, it was a great presentation that you did for the Summer Villages last weekend and that. And thank you for this one. And thank you for this one.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
There's some great successes here and Counselor Chamzuk loves libraries. There's some great successes here and Counselor Chamzuk loves libraries.
And we love her. And we love her.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it and your time here with us. So safe travels. Well, thank you again. I appreciate it and your time here with us. So safe travels. Thank you. Be careful out there. It's going to be a hot one and windy one. Thank you. Be careful out there. It's going to be a hot one and windy one. And we're hearing all kinds of emergency alerts, so thoughts go out to everyone that are dealing with those as well. And we're hearing all kinds of emergency alerts, so thoughts go out to everyone that are dealing with those as well.
Do. Do.
Alright, take good care. Thank you. Alright, take good care. Thank you.
I'll leave this. I'll leave this.
Thank you so much. Can we just take a few minute recess while we say our goodbyes, please? Thank you so much. Can we just take a few minute recess while we say our goodbyes, please? We'll come back at eleven twenty five. We'll come back at eleven twenty five. Um I think we have councillor Cromwell joining us again on Zoom. We are at uh eight point two of our agenda, which is on page two hundred twenty-four of your. Agenda package and it is for meeting calendars for June and July. Is there anyone who would like to begin? Go ahead, councillor Chamsak.
Uh sorry, July fourteenth, FCSS, and I have Pemina Zones there as well. Um and the fifteenth is the Village Library Meeting. And uh Town Library Meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay, is it confirmed Pemina Zones is on the fourteenth?
I could be the twenty-first. It could be.
Could be. Do we have that information?
Yes.
It's the fourteenth? Yeah, okay. Pemina Zone. Okay, anybody else? Councillors Minz?
Good, uh on the fourteenth of June, Athabasca Watershed Council AGM meeting on teams. And. I'm a hundred percent sure I we have a. Regional Waste. Commission meeting in June here. I think it's on the twenty-third, but I'll just have to make sure on that, but I I'm sure that there's one in June here.
So tentative on the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Councillor Anderson?
Uh the multiplex meeting is the sixteenth, but also the multiplex AGM is the sixteenth of June. And I believe there's supposed to be a Village of Boyle IMC meeting on June twenty-fifth. But still waiting for confirmation.
Okay, so tentative IMC uh June twenty-fifth. Boyle and County. Okay, anybody else? Councillor Gerla? Okay, Lou Herron. Um I'll go ahead and add a few myself. Um been invited to the both the uh Boyle and the Athabasca Symposium on June third and June fifth. Uh also invited to the Portage College Convocation on uh June fifth. Um. There's a tentative ALT uh planning meeting on June ninth and June twenty-third. Uh regional collaboration uh committee meeting um on June nineteenth. Um we also have been invited to the uh Wildfire Awareness Day uh at the Riverfront on June thirteenth. And uh as well as the National Indigenous Peoples' Day ceremonies on the June twentieth. Uh at four, between four and seven uh on the Riverfront. Um what else do I have here? Oh, I'm assuming. And I I didn't quite catch it, but the July first uh nine thirty um. Athabasca Regional Waste, that's cancelled, I'm assuming, for July first Canada Day?
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, that's a cancelled thing. Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, I know, no, that's that's why I'm shocked, because like.
Yeah, already, okay. And um just in eh with following our historical practice uh of July and August of holding one council meeting. Um is council um. I see there's July eighth is here and July thirty-first is council um in favor of cancelling the July eighth. Council meeting.
Could I propose we wait to?
Sorry, um councillor Cromwell, councillor Hall just mentioned to propose to wait until June for that conversation. Um was there something you wanted to add?
Nope, that sounds very fair. Um yeah, I'm I'm definitely good with holding off on that one.
Okay. So we'll leave that for further discussion at our next council meeting. And I think that's all I had to add. Does anybody else have any further? Alrighty, so if we're ready, somebody have a motion to accept the calendars as amended? Councillor Gerlock? Would like to accept the calendars as amended, and if we have no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I see no opposed. Thank you. Alrighty. So um we were going to go into reports, uh ten point one F will be discussed enclosed. Um which moves us to ten point one AI, uh which was our summer village uh Island Lake South, I believe it was, Island Lake South, yep. Meeting that took place. Um and just um to give a heads up, I will be providing uh regional community collaboration attraction. Uh and engagement uh report, and I apologize, I was not able to complete that in time. On to you.
Okay, so I guess uh. Met there on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, ten AM, uh it was. It was hosted at the Summer Village uh. Island Lake South uh New Hall, not new hall, it was added on, beautiful place. Um. Uh first off, everybody got the agenda uh prior, uh so just looking at it here, we had uh Ida Edwards from the town um. Reporting on uh River Arts Festival. And uh June thirtieth to July first and. And then she also reported at the same time Athabasca Watershed Council uh on the uh. There's a questionnaire being sent out regarding uh. Access to water. Uh through the Alberta government, which was a shock to my understanding to everybody. Uh I didn't make that uh. Telephone call, but uh I guess uh looking at inter-basin transfers, so. There is a website that you can go on and uh if you want to do the do the uh questionnaire on it, um the survey. And and that uh you're able to do that. I think I could probably send that out, or did we send it out to all council?
Yeah, I sent it out to all council.
Good, yeah, and and that's just to talk about. My thoughts on that is they're looking at uh Athabasca, Athabasca River and and the mighty Peace. Just because there's less people up north to actually have a discussion about this, but that's my own point of view. And what it'll end up doing is is if it works up here, well, then why won't it work south? So for inter-basin transfers, but. That's uh that's my thoughts. Everybody could have a different thought. Um. And then. Uh. Regarding that, actually, the the environmental, the Alberta environmental uh person uh that we have on this board. From my understanding, was very shocked that this was even coming out. So this was part and parcel higher up in the government and to push this and they're just informing their environmental people now. About this possibility, so and it's all got to do with water.
For clarity, did you say from the Peace? From the Athabasca to the Peace?
Or from the the Peace to the Athabasca?
Either the Peace was short.
Yeah.
Because of the site C down.
What's that?
I thought Peace was running short because of site C.
It could be, so uh with the understanding that, but the Athabasca doesn't have a lot of of, it doesn't have a lot of allocation on there yet. But uh start moving that. Biggest thing is the inter-basin transfers. Why are they, where are they trying to say, you know, and 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 that's. That's when you actually look into it, I think there's a little bit more. Little bit more regarding it that than they're saying. But that's. That's the government, so uh. Then we had a uh, as you heard, James McDonald through the Northern Library lights uh uh. Give his presentation, very good. Talking about. Uh. Getting each summer village to maybe get their own library board for better funding. And uh and that was really. Uh looked at positively through the through the summer villages and then that way they could. They don't have to build their own library, uh they could uh maybe enhance the existing libraries in here. Uh so so that was uh that was a really good presentation. Uh then Explorer Net uh gave a presentation. Uh regarding bringing in fiber optics into Athabasca through Athabasca County and then uh coming out all the way to. To Whispering Hills, it sounded like, so. Uh in twenty twenty-five, so be ready for another fiber optic line going through.
I just touch on that.
Yep.
So just to touch on that one as well, in speaking with the uh representative um Faruk, um there was a bit of conversation and um. I guess he was feeling a bit, I this is out of my control. So what's happening here is the Universal Broadband Fund and the government determine. Where this fiber is going to go. It's not up to Explorer Met to make that decision. And so there was quite a bit of conversation as to, well, how come it's not coming here anyway? Why is it going there? And so Faruk will be providing um a contacts uh for. Our municipal governments to be able to have that conversation with the people who are making the decisions on where that fiber goes, so that. Um local governments might be able to lobby, um you know, where they would like to see that particular infrastructure. So just a little note on that, the information's coming.
Yeah, and it's look looking like they're gonna go into like likes, they wanna go into subdivisions and. And and that's why they're going to Whispering Hills, is because they're gonna go in and go to the back to. To uh cul-de-sacs and then then they have a line in there. They wanna go right to the right to the house. This is not a uh Wi-Fi design like MCSnet. This is right to the right to the house, so. We asked them at that point in time, okay, well, what what's it gonna cost to get hooked up? And it's like, well, I don't know that. So 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 there's more information to come, eh? So. Um. And then we moved on to uh Kendra Gilbert with uh Bales' presentation, uh did a great job uh. Promoting Bales with with the municipalities of mainly. Uh being being involved, maybe in even into discussion with land use bylaws and stuff like that, being in around the lakes and and. Working together and just having. Affirmative and productive discussions together. If you have, if if municipalities have questions. Please reach out to Bales, or they're they're not there to. To hammer everything down or down the throats. They're there for information and and working together. So that was actually a great presentation to. Yeah, you know, not walking in with a with a big stick. It was more to help administration and help help the municipalities move along. Uh went on to the Athabasca Waterline, uh so I give, uh they asked me to just to give a quick. Update on that and which I did and and. There was some some discussion about uh. And I seen it today, termination point. That that was uh that was a huge thing in there was uh was. Where is this gonna stop? And and it was like, oh, here we go. So uh, you know, like I told him, I says the. Uh. Our main, our main scope right now, as far as I know, is to get the alignment through the town of Athabasca and get the alignment all the way out to. To Island Lake. And then once we got that determined. Then. Possibly the the, see where the budget's sitting and the termination point will be decided then. What was put through as the pre-design or not pre-design, the pre-study to to get the uh. To get the funding. May not be. Totally to point of of where this line gets uh the the. Termination of the line, so. So, but I also did. Kind of mentioned to him that there's been no agreement signed by the summer villages yet to Athabasca County, so. So. Give them that uh to think about anyway, so. And uh everybody seemed to be uh really good with it. Um. Then fire protection and fire costs came up. And the town of Athabasca was there uh with Mr. Play, Mayor Play and and uh he kinda. He kinda jumped right in there and and said, well, I think that's on there on on this due to the agreement that. The town is looking for their fire department with the summer villages and that. And uh which I thank you very much, that uh from there, it went to. We were, the summer village meeting went into closed. So we. We were asked to leave and uh all six summer villages, I think they were gonna be talking about the fire costs and stuff like that, so so. In between there, actually, when Robe Lee was 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 discussing the fire agreements, he actually brought in the regional healthcare and retention committee update. And uh. Telling the summer villages, we have three nurses staying in the transitional house uh right now and. Uh six nurses in our area uh are in training to to open. Uh to try to get, once you get trained up to open up Boyle Hospital, uh nurse practitioner update. Uh what's happening there? Uh. Uh what else? Uh. Just a lot about the the healthcare and retention. Uh thank them very much for their their donation to the committee. And uh. If they they want to. Maybe come on board a little bit more, they could uh representation on the board can be looked at. Uh to give them a say and. And uh there was discussion about bursary programs for uh rural students for for and and locals to to. To get a bursary, then come back with uh and work in the area and and that, so so it was all around. It was a great information, great meeting. I think we're out of there about, what, twelve thirty? Started at ten, we're out of there twelve thirty, so. So yeah. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Um I should correct myself. Yeah, yeah, I should just correct it when I had said um it was the Island Lake South. It was actually hosted by. The Summer Village of South Baptiste, and it was at the Island Lake South Recreational uh Hall, which is a beautiful uh location. Um and I just wanted to send a huge thank you for the invitation to be there. Um it was great to meet everyone and I look forward to connecting again. Um and uh one of the phrases that I walked away from that I'll coin from uh Kendra Gilbert. Um was nature is a healing force, and I thought that was. Pretty powerful, considering we uh have an abundance of it here and uh just get out and enjoy that and and Bales is looking, of course, to be. Part of that conversation in the beginning for planning and stewardship, so it was an excellent meeting. I really enjoyed it and uh like I say, I. Look forward to connecting again. So thank you very much for the report and the information. Um I think that councillor Hall.
Just two questions. Um did you say there was a survey on the inter-basin transfer? And if so, is that something that can be circulated? Through our county social media channels, because I think that's something residents really need to weigh in.
For sure. Um I did forward it via email. Um I did send it to CAO, so I'm not sure if you've seen it yet. Um it's kind of mixed in a little bit there, but um yeah, for sure. I it would be great. I agree to be on there.
Secondly, there's some rumblings about uh the summer villagers wanting a new fire truck. Did they bring that up with you present?
Nope, they if they uh if they talked about that at all, it was when. And they went into close, so. Yeah, nothing, nothing was discussed really. It was more discussion between the the town and the summer villages.
Awesome. Alright, so there any further questions? Alright, so the next report, we have to enter into closed for that conversation. So may I have a motion? To go into close councillor Minz, councillor Gerlock, councillor Gerlocks would like us to enter into closed, all those in favor?
Aye.
There we go, I believe that's seven. Thank you, we're out of closed. So uh the next item on our agenda um would be seven point six. Um and this is that uh recommendation for the revised twenty twenty-five fire fleet replacement. And the recommendation is that council approves. The purchase of the four fire apparatuses identified through the current capital budget. So is there a discussion on this item? Pretty quiet bunch. Alright, so um motion? I'm sorry?
Make that motion please for you. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, you can't because the motion is already on the floor and we tabled it.
The motion, I who, was that your motion? I'm trying to figure out the original. You moved to table?
Uh okay, yeah.
And was that your motion? Okay. Right, but for a minute taker, um they seem to like the ownership of it, so. Are there's any further discussion on this? Alright, so Brian Hall, councillor Hall, would like to move that the council approves the purchase of the four fire apparatuses identified through the current capital budget. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, seven and O. Alrighty, we'll move on to the items that we discussed in closed. Item twelve point one is to move that, and I will be doing that move, that council deny. The request to remove tax penalties as discussed in the closed session. There's no further discussion, all those in favor? Just waiting on you councillor.
Aye.
Okay, that's seven and O, thank you. Councillor Hall would like to read a motion for twelve point two, please.
To uh the motion is to direct administration to develop bylaws. To change the tax payment deadline to October thirty-first for for the twenty twenty-five year only. And to uh develop uh bylaws to uh extend, open up and extend the deadline for the small business classification for an additional sixty days.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? No, and okay, if we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? Councillor Cromwell? Did I hear an I? Yeah, okay, perfect.
Aye.
Thank you, so that's seven and O. Uh item twelve point three, councillor Anderson would like to go forward with the count that make the motion that council direct administration to use. The general operating reserve to fund the abatement and demolition work as described with the proceeds of the sale to go back to the general operating reserve. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Councillor Cromwell? See there, councillor Cromwell, are you in favor or opposed? We're going to say that councillor Cromwell's no longer with us. He's probably frozen. Yeah, so this will be a six and O, pardon? I can't delete him. I'm assuming that he's frozen, yeah. Alright, so six and O. Item number. I'm sorry, excuse me.
I think you need to close the link or expect to vote.
Okay, I guess, sorry councillor Cromwell, you've got to go. Alright, so we'll still leave that at six and O unless and we need to do a re-vote. Okay, good enough. Uh item twelve point four, I believe was councillor Gerlock. Who would like to make the motion that council direct administration to move forward with the sale of the Wandering River Agriplex. To the Wandering River Agricultural Society and the sale of the Wandering River Senior Citizens Drop-In Center. To the Wandering River Senior Citizens Drop-In Center Society for a nominal amount of one dollar. Oh, that was not you? I had written that down. I'm sorry. I apologize, councillor Cromwell. I apologize. Councillor Cromwell would like to have that motion. Sorry, I wrote down the wrong.
Chair, he's not with the meeting, so he can't.
He can't make that motion. Who would, councillor Chamsak would like to make the motion and uh that council directed men to move forward. With the sale of the Wandering River Agriplex to the Wandering River Agricultural Society. And the sale of the Wandering River Senior Citizens Citizens Drop-In Center to the Wandering River Senior Citizens Drop-In Center Society. For a nominal amount of one dollar. And that council direct administration to keep the Wandering River Teen Center property for future county use. And that council direct administration to sign updated lease agreements for both Casland Community Hall with the Casland Recreation and Culture Society. And Rochester Fairgrounds with the Rochester and District Agricultural Society. With no further discussion, I'm assuming, all those in favor? And opposed, one, five and one, thank you. Your motion? Okay. The last item twelve point five on the agenda, uh. Deputy Reed Minz would like to that to move that council directs administration to complete a level of service policy. And to revise the fire equipment and services policy and present to a future committee of the whole meeting. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, that's six and O.
Do you need a motion to accept the reports for information or to receive them? No, okay. I I'd also, I I've been thinking, I'd like to provide notice of a motion for reconsideration of my vote on eight point one C under. I for to be considered at the next meeting.
Eight point one C. To be reconsidered at the next meeting? So the motion, um, on the floor right now is for reconsideration. It's a notice of motion, alright, it's a notice of motion. Fantastic, I think we're done, folks, today, so we'll adjourn today's meeting at one thirty-five.